All right. Good morning, trustee Ayers Wilson. I will now call, thank you. I'll now call to order the Audit and Finance Committee meeting of the Board of Direct, Board of Trustees of Lone Star College System. It is now 9:05 a.m. on May 10th. First orders called to order, second order of business is pledge of allegiance. If you, John, if you come forward and do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, sir. I could have certification of the posting of the Audit and Finance Committee meeting, please.
The meeting has been posted in accordance with the law.
Thank you. Is there anyone signed up for public comment this morning?
No, sir, we do not have anyone.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Ayers Wilson, we now need to vote on this agenda item, please. Approval of minutes of the November 30th, 2021 Audit Finance Committee meeting. Would you be kind enough to make a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry, I'm trying to unmute.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I appreciate that. The item passes. Next item is review measurement of cash reserves. Ms. Jennifer Mott's going to come forward, make that presentation.
Good morning. Thank you very much, trustees, for joining me this morning. I really do appreciate your time. I really wanted to take an opportunity to have a discussion about the measurement of our cash reserves out of wanting for transparency because there are different ways that we can do this measurement. And I wanted to go through with you this morning some proposals I have in changing how we do that measurement. So if I could first give some background and history is, so the cash reserves is one of the primary metrics that I report to the board in terms of financial metrics, right? How much cash we have, I typically report it as a percentage of our expenditure budget. I do want to mention here that this is actually not very typical for governmental entities. Many governmental entities use what's called fund balance, which is much more of an accounting concept. It's within certain portions of the funds, your revenues minus, not revenues, I'm sorry, assets minus liabilities. So it's a bit more like a net income idea for the fund balance. That's what most governmental entities use, but prior to me starting as CFO, Lone Star College started using cash reserves instead. And I can definitely understand why. It's much more intuitive than what a fund balance is. And in a lot of ways, it's a lot more useful, right? A fund balance does not necessarily tell you how much cash we actually have on hand if there were to be an emergency. Of course, cash reserves does tell you that. So Lone Star College has been using cash reserves as one of its primary financial metrics that I have been reporting, and this has been the case, like I said, since before I started as CFO. And here too, the way cash reserves have been measured current, as it currently stands, is also measured in a way that was, that was already how it was being measured when I started. And I have not changed how we did that measurement. I've been here five years now, and this is where I would like to propose these, some changes to how we measure cash reserves. So to talk through first, how we measure them today. Within our cash reserves, there are, and this is unrestricted cash reserves, is all I'm talking about today. The cash reserves themselves are in sort of two separate buckets. The first bucket is our short-term cash reserves. This is the cash that we hold in money market accounts and investment pools. Not exactly the same, but this is probably the closest thing that I would call for Lone Star College for a household, what would be your checking account, is the short-term cash reserves. Then we also have the long-term cash reserves, which is cash that's invested. So in that sense, it's not actually cash. It is invested in maturities, but we keep the maturities very short. By policy, they do not exceed 36 months. I think in general, we actually keep the maturities closer to 12 months. Now, this long-term cash reserve to a household, the corollary might be your savings account, but the one that is directly linked to your checking account, so you have quick and ready access to that savings account. So that would be the long-term cash reserves, if I'm kind of trying to give an idea of how we use these two different buckets. So those are two buckets of cash reserves, the unrestricted cash reserves. So the way Lone Star College measures our cash reserves today is the cash reserves that I report to the board and have been, right, for the past five years, consists of the long-term cash reserves as of fiscal year end, which is August 31st. Okay. And this is where I want to point out, right? So that means that within those two buckets, when I'm reporting the cash reserves, I am not including the short-term cash reserves as one. And two, right, I mean, the, the cash balance does literally change every single day. So in order to have a measurement, it's done as a certain point in time, and that has been our fiscal year end of August 31st. Then we have also just set a goal for ourselves, for Lone Star College, to have between 16 and 20% of cash reserves. This is measured as a percentage of the expenditure budget. So the chart here shows you, based on the current measurement of cash reserves, what percentage those reserves have been over the last several years. So you can see, we have been at our target of 16 to 20% since fiscal year 2017. There was a dip back in fiscal year 16, but since then, we have gotten it up and kept it up. And now, now that we are at and above 20%, ideally, we'd like to keep it closer to the 20% side of that target. So that is the background of how we measure cash reserves today. If I could go to the next slide, please. I have three things that I would like to change in how we measure cash reserves. And I'll go through each one and maybe pause after each one to discuss that particular one, because there really are three separate things in changing how I report our cash reserves. So first at the top, just to keep it in our heads, I have what the current definition is, the long-term cash reserves as of fiscal year end of August 31st. Okay. So number one, the first thing that I would like to change is I would like to expand this definition to include both the short and long-term reserves. I was not here when we first started cash, reporting on cash reserves. I can understand why they might have selected only reporting on the long-term cash reserves, but I do not have the full details as to why that was the choice. In my perspective, if there were to be an emergency and we needed cash for that emergency, both the short and long-term cash reserves would be available, both of them, not just the long-term reserves. So in terms of reporting to the board, much more comprehensively, what we truly do have available, this is where I would like to propose including both the short and long-term reserves in our definition. So if I could pause there and maybe get, see if there's any questions or thoughts on that one.
Sure. Trustee Ayers Wilson, any thoughts or comments at this point?
Um, I'm just wondering why they weren't including the short term in the first place. You know what I mean? Because that means we weren't given true information.
Well, so part of it, I can understand why, and like I said, I was not here for that, so whatever I say right now truly is speculation. But in terms of the short-term cash reserves, and this will kind of maybe even get to when I go to number two, you do also need some amount of the short-term reserves to fund your immediate operating expenses, right? You do need that in your checking account for whatever, say, checks might hit your account tomorrow. So I can definitely understand why they might have made this choice to only report long-term reserves, right? Because that short-term, you, at any point in time, I can't say how much of that cash is truly available, because some portion of it tomorrow might go out the door in terms of checks getting cashed. So while I am recommending that we do something different, I can understand why someone may have made this choice to report only the long-term reserves. But I do want to repeat that I was not here for that, and so that truly is speculation on my part. And there was a period of time, right, prior to me starting, where there was an interim CFO and other things, so it also could have been just simply that, something that was quick and intuitive at that moment. But like I said, that is speculation on my part, since I was not here.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. And if it'd be better for you to answer this later in your presentation, feel free. But with respect to the long-term cash reserves that's defined now, how liquid are they? I say, I know you said 12 to 36 months, but if you were in a cash emergency, another hurricane catastrophic event, could you borrow against it or cash out early? What are your options with respect to the long-term so that you don't have to necessarily deplete your short-term?
And I have not explored whether we could borrow against it. I could explore that and, you know, reach out to a bank and find that out. At this point in time, we do not have a line of credit against it set up, so I would have to do the leg, right, which can be done, but put some sort of agreement in place with the bank to be able to borrow against it. If that's an option we wanted, I would need to have that set up ahead of time. So that's on that. In terms of being able to break them, that one, I mean, we do invest in different things, so it's going to depend on which one. I will say, one thing we work hard to do is to make sure a lot of it is rolling things. So at any point in time, we have, say, a 12-month maturity, maturing, right? So it's not that the entire portfolio matures all at the same time, 12 months from now. It's, everything is kind of invested and reinvested on a rolling basis. So at any given time, we have good portions of it maturing.
Would that be the same as a laddering effect?
Similar, very similar, yes.
Okay. All righty. Would you be receptive to formalizing, you don't have to say yes or no, but would you be receptive to formalizing long-term, not to exceed, long-term cash reserves, not to exceed 12 months?
Let me go explore that one, because I would like to also see how it could impact what rate of interest we do earn on this long-term cash reserve.
Okay.
It would impact that, but let me check that.
And interest rates are rising right now, so my, there could be a financial impact. All right, thank you.
Okay, so that is proposal number one. Proposal number two, and so I suppose number one and two do sort of work together in terms of what I mentioned about this, one concern of the short-term reserves is not knowing how much of that truly is available. So number two for me is to change the point in time of the measurement, right? If you look at our cash balances, as I mentioned, they change throughout the entire year, they change every day. But there is definitely a pattern over the course of our 12 months, primarily due to property tax receipts. Property tax receipts is 42 to 45% of all of our revenues. We don't receive those revenues evenly across the 12 months. We receive the vast majority of them during the months of December, January, and February. So that means, and you can see, this is what the chart is showing, multiple years' worth of how our cash balance goes up and down over the course of the year. Our cash balance goes up significantly during those three months as we're receiving those tax revenues. But of course, within our budget, our intention is to use those cash revenues over a whole 12-month period. So all of those revenues come in, our cash balance hits its high point, usually in the spring around March or April. And then from there, after the bulk of the revenue receipts have come in, the tax revenue receipts have come in, and as we're spending out of that and spending out of the tuition and fee revenue, our balance declines until it hits its low point, usually around the end of November or early December. That is just the typical pattern that our cash balance follows. So under the current definition, I, I do the measurement of our cash balance as of August 31st. And again, I can understand why someone just picked that, because that is the end of our fiscal year. We have almost all of our financial metrics pegged to the August 31st date, because most of the more accounting-type concepts need to be tied to our fiscal year. So it makes complete sense to me that someone would have just said, let's report this as of the end of our fiscal year, which is August 31st. For me, however, cash, our cash does not care about our fiscal year, right? It follows this part, pattern regardless of that fiscal year. So for me, August 31st is not the best point in time to do this measurement, because as you can see from the charts, our cash balance declines from there. So if I report to the board as of August 31st, this was our cash reserve. That is a truthful statement, but then the next day, that balance is lower, and the day after that, it's lower again, and it continues to decline until it comes back up after the low point, which, like I said, is somewhere around the end of November or December. So my concern here is if the goal of this cash reserve is for Lone Star College and the board and everyone to know that should an emergency arise, we have X amount of dollars in the bank, ready to help us out in that emergency. If that's the goal, then the challenge with the August 31st date is I report that number, and then if the actual emergency were to occur, say, in September, October, or November, we don't have that amount of money in the account, just because of this natural trend in our cash reserves. So this is where I would like to change the point in time of the measurement to be our lowest cash balance of the year. Now, from year to year, this date does move. It's not going to be the same date each year, but it is always roughly around the end of November or early December. But I'd like to do the measurement at that point in time, because then Lone Star College, the board, everyone will know that that should an emergency occur, no matter when it occurs, we will have at least that much in cash in our accounts. And for the most part, we will have more than that, but at least we will know that this is the minimum amount that we will have to act as a cushion in, in the case of an emergency. So that's my second proposal, is to change the point in time of the measurement.
Trustee Ayers Wilson, before she goes to the next item, do you have any questions or comments on number two?
Um, not right now.
Okay. I have a couple of questions as, as you'd expect. All right, so this is somewhat related, but if the discussion has caused me to think about the collection analysis comparing our collections from Montgomery County and Harris County. So I'd be interested in seeing what that looks like over three years.
The collection analysis over three years?
And then you probably have it, but if you could also send out the percentage of collections in litigation from both taxing, not taxing jurisdictions, the tax assessor collectors from Montgomery and Harris County, since they both collect for the system. And I know Harris County uses two law, I think, I should say, I think Harris County uses two law firms for collections. I think it used to be Linebarger, I believe. They've started to use Purdue Brandon, but I'm not positive. The county attorney's pushing strongly to become the collection agent on delinquent taxes in that, I don't know if that's been formalized into policy yet, but it's being considered. So I think we might want to start doing some homework as to how willing we would be to accept that. Not that we would have a choice, but to at least be aware of either the potential increase in collections or not in Harris County. And if we're going to have to do it for Harris County, might as well do it for Montgomery County, even though they're not discussing changing from private collection firms to the county attorney.
Okay, yes, I could. So I have to get to you a collection analysis for the last three years, the percent collections that we have in litigation, and then also to review if we can see what the impact might be should the county become the
County attorney.
The county judge.
County attorney, not judge.
Yeah, should they change, make that change to the collection as opposed to, yeah, we do currently, Lone Star College does currently use Linebarger. So I will
We have a contract with Linebarger ourselves.
We do. Yes, I can get that to you also.
Okay. The blank stare was me, not you, excuse me. I just wasn't aware of that. I have no problem with that, just wasn't aware of it. I thought the tax assessor collector's office handled all the delinquent tax collections for Harris County, but I could be wrong. And then second, in the financial reporting that you've been giving to the board, has short-term and long-term cash reserves been distinguished? Have they been broken out? Or have we just been looking at cash reserves holistically and not know that the difference per se?
When I am reporting on the budget and where I'm forecasting to end the year, it, that one has just been the long-term as of August 31st, but each month in the monthly reports on the balance sheet, both are broken out. And so I know we just had board meeting the other night, and this would have been in front of everyone. But if you go back and look at, say, the last board packet in the monthly financials on the balance sheet, it's down towards the bottom. There's a whole section called fund balances. And within that list, you would see, the first one is called restricted operating cash, short-term reserves. And then beneath that, it's restricted operating cash, long-term reserves. So both are broken out and reported in each monthly report. So it is there in my statements. I don't call it out, because that's where I have focused on the end-of-year forecast according to how we have currently been measuring it.
Okay, all right. And short-term cash reserves are restricted, or you said restricted short-term?
Yes, I mean, they're not legally restricted, but we have them in our, it is our restricting operating cash account. So it's probably more terminology than any sort of legal, it's not, it's not restricted. It is open for any general use.
Okay. Would that be worth looking at going forward, the terminology?
Yes.
You don't have to. My, my comments are just suggestions. I'm just a member of the committee and just one of nine trustees, so I'm not beating you up on stuff. It just, as you discuss it, I think about it, so.
Yeah, no, that's helpful, helpful. I tend to look at the balance sheet and I look at the numbers, because I already know what it is. I take for granted, right, that I know what it is. So I appreciate the comments on others being able to read the financial statements.
Okay. All righty. Those were only two comments or three comments. Thank you.
Okay. So my final and third proposal is, I mentioned that a lot of governmental entities use this other accounting concept called fund balance. So we do, within our operating accounts, have different funds. There is our general operating fund. There is a student activity fund. There is also a technology fund. This is a way for us to just sort of organize some of our different activities. We also, for example, have an auxiliary fund. So within our accounting, we have these separate funds for us to keep these different sources in their different, in sort of different buckets. So when you report cash reserve, effectively, cash in any one of those funds is all included in the cash reserve, right? Because they are separate concepts, but they are one, it's really one in the same thing. If I'm telling you how much cash is in our accounts, that is the cumulative total of everything in all of our different funds, which is fine, because all of our different funds, they do have different legal uses, but they are not restricted uses, because this is only our operating and auxiliary funds. Like I said, I am not including in any of this the actual debt and capital restricted funds. Those are set, completely set apart. But when looking within our operating and auxiliary funds, there is one fund that does have a legal restriction on its use, and that is the student activity fee fund. That fund, we are not allowed to use those funds for anything other than student activities. So for that reason, if there were to be an emergency, those funds are not and should not be available for use. Now, this worked out fine when we were only including long-term cash reserves in the definition, because the balance of the student activity fund is low enough that easily, we could say that was set aside in the short term. But now, if I'm going to include both the short and long-term reserves, and I'm including all of the unrestricted cash, then we really need to exclude the student activity fee fund from this definition of how I measure cash reserves. Because even though it may be cash in our account, it does have legal restrictions on its use. So that is the third proposal on how I would change measuring cash reserves.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Ayers Wilson, any questions on this item?
Um, no, I do, well, I do have a question. So were you all, like you said, this student, um, student activity funds, y'all, did y'all count that? You know what I'm saying? Even though we can't use it for emergencies or whatever, was that included in the figures you said?
So in the current definition, it's neither explicitly included or excluded, but it is effectively excluded because we were only reporting on long-term reserves. The short-term reserve balance is easily large enough that the student activity funds could be said to be within that one. So it is effectively excluded in what I have been reporting previously. And I just want to ensure that we really continue to do so if I'm proposing to expand this definition to be both the short and long-term reserves.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else, trustee? Okay, thank you. I have three questions. I'm going to reverse them from what I wrote. So with respect to the activity funds, how are they decided to be used? Is that by campus? Or is that different than the, what I'll call the president's? It's not a discretionary fund, but there's a fun name for, that's generated from bookstore sales and other things. Could you help me understand that?
Sure. I think it is in our auxiliary fund is where there is some funds budgeted for each president to use towards, you know, helping students with books. That is not out of the student activity fund. Within the student activity fund, it is a combination. It's, we, Lone Star College sets a budget, and it is included in the budget that is brought to the board for adoption in August. So there we do have, so system-wide, student activities that first get budgeted out of there, and then the remainder gets allocated to each campus according to the prior year's credit hours from that campus. And then at each campus, they do have committees that collect feedback and input from students as well as other leadership roles throughout the campus, and they make a recommendation to the administration of each campus. And then at the end of the day, each campus's administration sets the budget for that year for the student activity fee fund. And I say they set it, they, they propose it in our budget book, which comes to the board for adoption. And it's included in the whole, the 100-page report, right, that we provide the board in July for adoption in August.
Okay. It's been a while since I've been on campus, so as a student, so forgive me for this, but can you give me a couple of examples of what a student activity fee might cover with respect to an activity on campus?
Yeah, this really funds a lot of, right, there's a lot of student clubs. I wish I had brought a list, but I know there's math clubs, there's, you know, I think there's chess clubs, those types of, and then there's a student government body, and a lot of those activities that students can join outside, on the campus, but outside of class is what would be funded by the student activity fee funds.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. All right, so now I'll go back up my list. What are our peers doing with respect to what you asked, number one, number two, number three? Do you have any idea, are we leading a change? Are we catching up to our peers? Is this an accounting industry recommendation, not recommendation, but expectation, if you will? Kind of give me a little background on why we're here.
So almost all of our peers, both in both in community colleges and other governmental entities, almost everyone uses fund balance, not cash reserve. So we really are choosing to be different in this respect in reporting cash reserves. I actually, in a lot of ways, can fully appreciate why we're reporting cash reserves, because as I mentioned at the beginning, it is a lot more intuitive than a fund balance. But almost all of our peers utilizes fund balance and a fund balance has very, you know, very specific accounting rules around what that fund balance is. So they wouldn't even have this conversation about how they're measuring it, because a lot of the accounting rules already dictates how you measure a fund balance. The reason, I guess, we even need to have a conversation about how we're measuring cash reserves is because we are choosing to be different in this regard, to focus instead focus, instead of focusing on fund balance, focusing on cash reserves. And like I said, I can definitely appreciate and understand the reasons that we would want to do that. But because we're focusing on cash reserves, which does not have around it as many rules dictating how you measure that cash reserve like a fund balance does, is why we would even need to have a conversation about how I report it. And what cash is included, what point in time, those types of elements.
Okay, so I'm going to paraphrase. We're still doing, we've been doing something different than our peers, and we will continue to do something different than our peers.
Yes.
Okay, what would our, what would the critics say about that? And who would our critics be other than hard questions from board members?
I suppose it would be. So I, I definitely have to have this conversation when I have conversations with rating agencies, for example, in terms of financial critics, that would probably be rating agencies. Rating agencies really do not look at the cash reserves. They would probably look to see if we have, say, three to six months of cash on hand. But outside of that, rating agencies, they don't even look at our numbers in the same way the board does. They don't look at our budget. They look at our annual financial report, which is on a different basis than our budget. So in that sense, our critics, I don't know, they would not necessarily have a statement either way, because this is not a financial metric that they focus on. They will focus on the larger balance sheet. But I will say here, it was S and P that recommended several years ago that we have 16 to 20% of cash on hand. And right, but they didn't make a comment in this far into the weeds as to how I'm reporting what that cash reserve percentage is. So they do look at cash in that regard, but it's just one of many metrics that a rating agency would look at. What they would appreciate here is us simply having a healthy goal and level of cash reserves.
Okay, so if and if our bond counsel looked at it, they're not going to generally do not go down lower than other, other than your stated cash reserves. They're not going to care that much about how those cash reserves are accounted for, for lack of a better term.
No, because cash reserves in this way is you won't see it like this in our income statement or our balance sheet, our annual financial report. That's where they will focus on much more of the actual accounting, financial statements that we give to bond counsel, to rate in agencies and that group. So I think one place that the rating agencies might give this an appreciation is within the ratings, one of the metrics they do look at is the strength of our governance. And if this is a metric that allows the board to be more involved and be more watchful over the college's level of reserves, because it's more intuitive than, say, a fund balance, then that could help us on that governance piece. And that's where I would not recommend changing using cash reserves to fund balance. Because at the end of the day, what is important is that the board has a financial metric that it can feel fully empowered to weigh in on. And a fund balance can get challenging if you're not in the weeds of all the different accounting rules to really be able to provide guidance on. And that's where I think a cash reserve is a good idea, because it is intuitive for the board, the community, people of all backgrounds to truly be able to have an, an understanding of of where our financial strength is in terms of the cash reserve.
Okay, I have one more question. I'll go to trustee Iris Wilson to see if she has any final questions or comments. So with respect, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but with respect to how someone would look at a fund balance and when I was on the board, I thought fund balance was just generally available, cash to spend, do what we need to, when we need to, how we need to. But after listening to you, it's actually more restrictive because you can't tell from fund balance what the obligations are, whether or not they're encumbered. Whereas cash reserves, other than the long term cash reserves, it might be encumbered 12 to 36 months. You can write a check that day for whatever you need to. Is that fair in layman's?
Yes and no. The fund balance does remove from it liabilities, because the fund balance is within the general, the general accounts, assets minus liabilities. So it does remove from it obligations. But within assets, it could include more than just cash. For example, it could include accounts receivable. Right? So that's items where it's money someone else owes us and hasn't paid yet. That is an asset of ours, but it's not actually cash in our bank account. So that's where a fund balance can provide, right, a governance structure, a good way to guide the financial strength of an organization. But it is not, it is not necessarily that straight line to cash available to write a check with tomorrow. Definitely not in the same way that reporting this cash reserves metric is.
Okay, so cash is cash, it can be spent. Okay, got it. Trustee Iris Wilson, this is our last agenda item, so.
And I do have one more slide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
If we could go to the next slide, please. Because I wanted to provide sort of the wrap up summary of now, what is the impact of these three proposals of changing the measurement? So I have first the, the current way that we measure cash reserves, which is long term cash reserves as of fiscal year end of August 31st. The revision that I'm proposing is to expand it to short and long term cash reserves. But then to change the date to as of the lowest cash balance in the following fiscal year and to exclude the student activity funds. So with that revised definition, this chart shows you where our cash reserve would have been over the past several years. Now, this, it does certainly put those cash reserves in hindsight in the prior years lower than the current definition. But that's part of the reason I personally feel that right now is the best time for us to make this change, because with the COVID stimulus funds and the way those have supported us through COVID plus the measures we took also to reduce our budgets and to freeze spending, we have a very healthy cash reserve right now. So we can make this change right now and still be well above our cash reserve goal. In fiscal year 21, so you can see the lowest cash balance date in fiscal, in 2021 was November 4th. So on that date, using this measurement, we would have, we had 26% cash reserves. So this is where, right, I wanted to show the impact of these proposals on that.
Trustee Iris Wilson, any questions?
Um, no questions. I'm interested to see how it's gonna, how it's gonna be. If we include this, you know what I'm saying, from now on, from this point on?
So in term, so none of, a lot of the reporting that I currently do really won't visibly change. And that's part of why I wanted to have this discussion with the, with the finance committee here is because I can make this change and the board members may, may not be aware that this change has occurred. Because typically, I just report the percentage as I have been and will continue. So in that sense, what you see and hear of from me won't change. I will continue to report the cash reserve balance as I have been. But I wanted the finance committee to, to know that behind the scenes, sort of that these changes in how we're measuring it have occurred. Does that make some sense? I have been reporting it, but under the current definition, and I will continue to report it under this revised definition.
Okay, thank you. Any more slides?
Nope.
Okay. Good, then as we wrap up, trustee Iris Wilson, any comments in general, closing comments, or do you want to go back and look at the previous slides for any additional information?
No, I'm good. If I have some, something comes up, it comes to mind, then I can email, you know, you send an email. Oh, I do have a question. So with COVID that we just dealt with for the last two years and of course, every, you know, a lot of people are going into collections because they don't have the money. How is that going to affect? You know what I'm saying, the reserves or will it, or you know, for the coming year?
It, it really will not directly impact the cash reserves because there were the three separate stimulus bills, right, that gave Lone Star College got grant funds from the, between all three of them, $217 million. About 75% of that is going directly to students. And then the other 25% is gonna, is helping to cover losses that we incurred, but also to help cover COVID specific services initiatives that we've done, for example, the LSC Tech Connect program that's making computers available for students. Right now, that's being paid for with the COVID stimulus funds. When we had to, when we were buying millions of dollars worth of PPE, the grant funds were used for those things. So students impact of COVID on students and on Lone Star College is really being covered by those grant funds. So in that sense, that won't impact our cash reserve. It's impacting indirectly in the sense that we have these other resources to address COVID as opposed to having to address it through Lone Star College, our tuition and fees and our property taxes, our operating funds. So it's an indirect impact in that sense, in that things that we would have been our best, trying our best to do with our own funds, we are able to do with the COVID stimulus funds instead.
Okay, I was just wondering, because eventually the funds will run out, so you know, I just wanted to see what side we will be on. One, you know what I'm saying, once we deplete the funds, because they won't be there forever. And, you know, we probably won't get another stimulus, you know what I'm saying? So I just want to make sure that what side of the track we'd be on.
Yeah, so there, that will be part of the discussion at June 16th, when we do the budget workshop. So we do have a deadline to spend all of the COVID stimulus funds by next June. We have to spend them all or they're gone. So yes, that is the end date for that. So I have gone through and I'm working on it now as we're building the proposed budget for next year, going through all of the operational spending that Lone Star College has been doing using the COVID stimulus funds. For example, the expansion of the mental health services. I am making a list of all of those things, because starting next year, those do have to now be rolled into our operating budget and supported by our operating funds. So next year, since I have till June, it won't be the whole year, so it'll be about a quarter of the year, right? The fourth quarter of next year. Those initiatives, if we want to continue them, we will then have to start supporting ourselves. And then, of course, we will then fully have to support them in the following fiscal year. So those items are going to be included in the proposed budget that I will be bringing forward June 16th, and I will identify those items in that presentation of initiatives that we are already doing, but is being paid for with the COVID stimulus funds, and now we need to be prepared to support them with our operating funds.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yes, yeah, so we, I'm definitely been working on planning that. I've been keeping that list this whole time. And to be honest, with the amount of money, also trying to caution people about how many operating initiatives we start, me knowing that there would come a point in time that we would need to support them ourselves. And that is the, a large reason why we have, of course, not the only one wanting to help students, but a much larger portion, the 75% of the funds going to direct to students is significantly more than we're required to do. But part of that decision making was, one, good to just give it directly to the students, but also being conservative, I didn't want to add too many operational items that we would then have to support afterwards. I didn't want to get it to the point where we would not be able to support them afterwards, after the funds.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for taking that approach.
Send an email or anything, I'm happy to answer additional questions that may come up.
Okay, so you've made a, you've made recommendations to the audit finance committee today. We do not take a vote on that. So what are your next steps? What, what happens next? And what role, if any, does the committee play?
So here, I would say that unless there are significant concerns that, that either of you wish to share, or, you know, either now or afterwards, barring that, I'm going to go ahead and make this change to how I'm reporting cash reserves.
Okay, so trustee Iris Wilson, you okay with that? I have not heard anything today that would lead me to oppose any of her recommendations.
I'm good with it.
Okey dokey, and as she said, you can reach out to her anytime if you think of something later that you want to have an explanation on or give her a call on the phone, and she'll be more than happy to walk either one of us through it. Okay, thank you for participating today. We could not have done it without you, trustee Iris Wilson, I appreciate it. And Ms. Ma, if you don't have anything else, we'll consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time this morning.